I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Barron.
Present.
Mr. Christensen.
Present.
Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Present.
Mr. Noonan.
Here.
Mr. Pofa.
Here.
Mr. Robinson, Axon, Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
And Mr. Yeomans.
Here.
All right, we've got more than a quorum, that's great. Any public comment? Seeing none, move on to agenda additions or deletions. Anything to add? Should we talk about the budget?
Um, I was just gonna say, I don't know if I have a lot to add, but if you want to, I can try to give you an update of where we are on our budget.
Okay, let's... Let's do 1B as a budget update. Anything else? Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve.
Support.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving on to action items, we've got approval of the minutes from August 18th, 2021. Does everybody have a chance to look them over?
A while ago, I don't remember. I would move for their approval, as submitted.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, moved by Melinda, supported by Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll abstain.
Hope of us. All right, budget update.
Um, so we are almost through with our budget, and to date, our 45,000 capital improvement dollars are still in there, and $4,000 is in the under $5,000 category, so that's all still in there. Um, we have money to help pay for our minutes. That is still in there, and it looks like, right now, we plan on paying for a little administrative assistance. And I, I'm not com- I don't know if that will come out of our budget, I don't think so, I think it's going to come out of the administrative's budget. Anyway, what it sounds like we'll do is convince Laurel to continue to be our assistant, she'll get a stipend monthly for assisting us and keeping us on track, and all of that. So that's pretty much, I think we have a consensus of the board that, that that will work for us. So we'll want kind of a compliance assistant type of compliance guidance of some sort. So hopefully Laurel, who's a pro at this for Parks and Rec, will take that on and continue to guide us. And then which would be Elsa?
Melinda.
She does, she does, but we're a tight board, we're cheap.
So for the most part, everything's just staying status quo?
Yeah, we have the status quo for us, yep, but we haven't, fortunately, nothing's been cut for us, so.
Wait, I missed, I didn't understand that your reference to 4,000, $5,000, what was point two?
Capital outlay, capital outlay, we have two budgets under capital outlay, one is for 45,000, we generally work out, and then the other one is capital outlay, under 5,000, and there's 4,000 in that.
Oh, okay, got it, got it, thank you.
Forty-nine thousand, same as last year.
Yeah, got it, thank you.
So Melinda, the 45,000, we're gonna try to do the playground, the parking lot entrance, and the pavilion?
I believe those were the three, does that sound right, Laurel, when we did our?
Those are the three, are the consensus of this?
Yeah, 10 was for a pavilion, playground equipment.
It's like 20 or 25?
It's 20 to 30.
Yeah, 20, 30, okay.
And so I take it you guys stuck with the 20, and then the 15 for the parking lot entrance, comes to 45.
Yep, yep.
So we'll try doing those then.
Yep.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on the budget?
Did I omit anything, Laurel?
I don't recall.
Okay. I think that's pretty much.
Because we're not live streaming, it's hard for me to listen in here.
I don't think I forgot anything. We just kinda sail away over it, but, um, which is good.
All right, moving on to the financials, approval of financials. We've got them here, Scott's not here to go over them, but things are fairly self-explanatory. Looking at 62% overall, a little over 62%. Yep, things are...
I'll make your motion to approve.
Is there support? Support? Moved by Yeomans and supported by Barron's, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Committee reports, Miles Kimberley.
Uh, Miles Kimberley is going to report that the grub shack will be removed by within the next month. That's the story for Miles Kimberley.
Old settlers? Not a whole lot going on over there.
There was a recommendation, I think, that was just made at Miles.
Oh, thank you, yes. Laurie, could you read that, please, from our 1 o'clock meeting?
Do you want me to read it real quick? Recommend to the Parks and Recreation Commission to exercise option 3 to replace the grub shack at Miles Kimberley.
And option 3, for those who don't know, maybe it was John Walter did some plans and had three different options for the replacement building, a pavilion, if you will, and option 3 was chosen, and it has a universal access toilet there with three other toilets on the back part, the front part is a storage building that's either gonna be 12 foot wide, or maybe 20, uh, in depth, not width, it's 18 foot in width, but it'll be 12 foot in depth versus maybe 36 feet in depth, and it's a matter of deciding what's, which way to make that, John's gonna redo the plan a little for us. But what we'd like to do, really, is the building will not be done this year, I'm afraid, because there's just not time for it, but we'd like to get the slab down this year, if there's money, if there's money left in the budget. If there's money left in the budget, put the slab down, that'd be important to do. And the way we would do the slab is we'd make it so that it's the size of the building plus a foot off on each side to catch the rainwater coming off the roof, and it would come forward a little bit, so there's a place for people to step on when they come up to view the, the kiosk-type posters on the front of the building. The door to the building is on the side, I don't know, was it the last full meeting, was that package distributed that John submitted?
I believe it was.
I think we had photos.
I think it was, okay, but it's the same one, and we just liked, we couldn't decide in our committee whether to make it a 12-foot-depth storage room, or a 36-foot-depth storage room, and it's a minute thing, we can figure that out, but the important thing we came up with was that the slab should overhang the structure that we put up by a foot on each side, along the sides, and on the back a little bit for people to step up to use the toilet facilities on the back, and on the front, it's gotta be a little place that people can come, and maybe put an awning over that eventually, where they could view the different maps and posters, whatever else that we wanna post on the, on the quote "front of the building." There's no entrance on the front, the entrance is gonna be on the side, on the picture that you have. I have it here, if you haven't seen it, if you wanna see it, I can pass it down.
Don, can I ask a question? Um, will the well pit for the surge tank be done this year?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
The story, everything by, it should be done by the middle of October. Uh, Jerry Coleman was here at our meeting earlier, and the electrical is gonna be separated from the building, it'll be on a separate post off to the side, out of the way, a permanent posting of that, it won't be attached to the building anymore, the way it is now. And the store, the pressure tank, which is inside the building, that'll be removed and taken out, and the new pressure tank is gonna be buried underground, which it used to be in the first place, I understand, and that was replaced, but this one will be buried underground. Hopefully, it won't rust and it'll last for a long time, I don't know the specifics of it, but that was the recommendation, that's what's being done.
Thanks, um, and I apologize the way, at the last meeting, I kind of went off the track, because those are my two main concerns, so I'm glad those two have been addressed.
No, well, that's good, you probably said something, because that probably got the ball rolling, because Scott, and Jerry, and whoever else, and maybe Laurel, who knows, but honestly, knowing to me, it was all, all taken care of, it wasn't none of my doing. I heard about it indirectly down the line, but that's, that's all been taken care of, yeah. And we're selling, we're, we have to actually sell the building for a dollar, and maybe Laurel can explain that, but we have to give him a dollar to take it away, we're paying him a dollar to take it away, basically. And there's some minutia, but, but that's pretty much it, questions?
Is your intent to do the slab, then, as, this year, out of this year's budget?
If the money's left for it, yeah, we'd like to, yeah. Only to get it started and to find it, if, if we have time to come up with the size of the building we want, and it's approved and everything.
Oh, so at this point, you don't have exactly the size of the slab above?
At our committee meeting, we couldn't really decide on the size of the building, and that's why we, the recommendation was to bring it to this committee. Thank you, Steve, I forgot all about that, and that's why I was mentioning it now, after being reminded. Yeah, we'd like some input from the whole board on what size we should have for it, Scott's not here, unfortunately, he would probably like the storage bigger, uh, but the minimum we should have it, according to John, who I just talked to a minute ago, is the 12-foot size, that's why he put that on the, uh, I'm thinking, I'm sorry, I didn't, you don't have a picture of that option with you, but, uh...
Hey, Don?
Yes?
The reason it was 12 would be, that would be a basic width, of which you could store four foot on either side, and have a four-foot aisle. Now, before you size the building, it'd probably be a good idea what you wanna store, and then size it for what it is you wanna store, and the circulation.
Well, that's, that's another loop that we have to pass, we get through, it was used for a lot of, it was used for a lot of things in the past, actually, it was built to be a clubhouse for the Cedar Maple City Lions. And they used it as a clubhouse, and then it became a storage facility, now, and now the soccer balls are being put there by the different teams that play, and we've decided, maybe that's not the best use of storage for our park, and we're gonna ask the people that play soccer there to bring their balls when they come and take their balls when they leave, and there's a smaller little structure over, beyond the grub shack, which we're talking about, that was kinda designed and made for them to use as a, as a short-term storage place for some stuff, which they don't use at all. Uh, so, that, that building that we're suggesting, whatever size we make it, is not gonna be used for, for soccer ball storage, it'll be used for something more than that. Scott said, according to Steve, just recently, that he doesn't have enough storage space over there, so my feeling was, why not make the building a little bit bigger than, than just the smallest size possible, which John proposed, and give him a little more storage. But then, in the interior design, John's right, so maybe we should use John, and I come back to you, nothing's gonna happen in a month, anyway, and come back to you in a month, and, and say... Go ahead, maybe there's something is gonna happen in a month.
No, I, I think that if this is something that gets recommended by this body to the County Board of Commissioners, you have to have a firm price.
Right.
Have to have what?
A firm price.
Jerry, please.
Excuse me, just interject, throw something in there, on if you decide to go with slab, eighteen by thirty-two, eighteen by thirty-two, orange deck, you know, fresh stone, uh, you're looking at about seven and a half yards, and you're looking at this time around $1,270 for that slab, but that doesn't include labor.
Yeah, the labor's another 50%.
That's just the cement wall.
Yeah.
That's right, that's priced right now.
Yeah, it's not a high-priced item.
So you guys would frame it, I would have to buy cement?
That's, uh, that's a pretty large, uh, I've done a lot of flower, uh, floral stuff for years, but, uh, laying pipe has been done. I mean, there's a lot to it, where you might be smart to have a company that has the equipment to plant, lay it discreet, and be done with it. If you're liking one, I'd love for it, love cement.
Hey, Don, one other thing I might add to that, and just the dimension of the shack, that there's now, there's over a foot grade change in two directions, because it's raised off the ground, so there is some excavation.
Either excavation or fill-in, we, we said at our meeting, we might have to fill in some areas.
It seems like maybe we'll come back next month.
We could fill it up a little, yeah.
I mean, we can...
There's only 90 more days this year.
I know, John, but they, they don't even know what size they want.
Well, we can sell that real quick, we can vote on it right here, we, we've decided to bring it to the board.
And check can approve, check can approve up to how much?
Up to five and four.
And I'm looking back at this budget, is why I put it in there, there's 45,000 for capital, and there's 4,000 for capital that's under 5 grand. We have to spend any of it.
Right.
So if this pad can be built, you can get ordinary quotes, you don't need an RFP, like, if you think such-and-such can build this pad and level it with gravel, and you got a nice quote and you like it, check could approve it, and it could possibly get built here before the snow flies in November. We have snow already.
All our local guys are not just sitting around waiting for jobs right now.
That's just it, I says, there's only three months left this year, so if they're gonna find somebody and do it, we can't wait till our meeting next month, it'll never happen.
You should have a firm plan, though. You should have a firm plan of
Oh, yeah.
what exactly you're doing for the entire project, not just this piece now, and then another piece later.
Right, and so, if you want this pad, and you want it built, and you want it sized like this, either we call a quick meeting, but I don't think that kind of stuff has to go to the Commissioners, because we've already got the capital crew, and these guys can get it, and someone can come there and pour that pad.
If we can get it for less than 5 grand, we can do it all.
Correct, yeah. If you wanna get it more than 5 grand, it ain't gonna happen till next year. It takes 90 days just to get through the Commissioners, but if you think there's one, and I know you've got some asbestos underpants on, too, or something like this, but if you do it right, and they can get ahold of somebody, and there's a builder that said, yeah, I can frame this and pour it and get it done.
Can I just add to interrupt your meeting, um, if you're looking at the same location with this building?
I don't know.
Yes, where? Okay, the problem, we, we're between two wells, we're between a domestic well, which we drink the water, and an irrigation well. In that building, there's two, four feet, uh, let's go six feet max on each side, this distance from the wells in the building. So, that's another thing to consider, because of the underground power, the underground, uh, water lines that feed the domestic water out of the fields. So, to put another building there, we may run into issues with, with the grade, unless we build the grade up, over, but we got two wells to consider, okay, especially the domestic well, which is two inches, and then there's, I think the irrigation's eight or 10 inches. But that's a consideration for the location of the building.
Maybe there's more work that needs to be done other than four.
Well, the current, John did that, John knows the location of the two wells, he made this building, the current building is 16 feet wide. His proposal was to make this building 18 feet wide, and then today, when we talked to you about this, we wanted the slab to extend a foot over on each side, so we're talking 20-foot wide, and I don't think a 20-foot wide, not counting, it's counting the slab, not the building of 18, doesn't, doesn't take into consideration, it does take into consideration the two wells. Am I correct on that, John?
Well, I was looking for my dimensions, if I remember right, what's the width now?
Eighteen is on your drawing, yeah.
If I remember right, on the, the potable water, it was nine feet from the building, and on the site water, it was 12 feet.
Yeah, I think there's plenty of room.
Um, that's just my memory, so, I, I don't know if that's a discussion, that's a discussion to look with, not with 10 people, but to, to design it and bring it back.
Yeah.
Well, if we had a motion where they could go ahead and proceed as long as they keep it under 5 grand, we don't have to come back to the Commissioners, as far as the board.
It makes sense to have a plan before you act on it.
We have a plan, but that's John's drawing.
One of, one of the things that's going on here that...
Shows your wells.
One of the things that is going on here is that the excavation that's gonna be needed to actually do this building and do it properly, so there's no erosion, and water won't wash it out, uh, has to be thought out.
Right.
And so that's a, that's a part, I mean, this is a start, um, and I think between now and the next meeting, we can have Scott weigh in, we can, we can do more thought on the site prep, we can do more thought on the underground, we can think it out more fully to have that in. If we need to look at a project that could, uh, happen this year, I think the, um, gravel for the parking lot at Veronica Valley is a possibility, um, you know, that might be something that's a little easier to turn the key on.
Well, there is, is why I put it back in the budget, there's 45,000 bucks that we spent zero on.
Well, no, wait a minute, we're spending some of that on the fishing walkway, are we not?
Right, that 45,000, the walkway, I think, was 25?
Twenty-three-five.
Twenty-three. So there's that, and the road culvert from the road commission is five, so there's 30, that leaves $15,000 in big debt of money. Yes, if I could find someone and gravel that thing for under 5 grand, we can go ahead and do it without going to the board, but I'll talk to that Elmer's guy when he comes, and get with Scott, the dimensions and that, but, uh, there is gonna be, we always have money left, oh, if you can get 15 grand there, and 4 grand below it, we're gonna go again, we got 20,000 bucks that we're not spending.
October 15th, if we, if we have a line, if we have somebody lined up that can do the, the concrete aft, at the end of October, we can get approved at the next, no, that has to go to the board, doesn't it? And our meeting's after the board meeting in October, so we would have to have a special meeting.
Correct.
And we get all our ducks in order for you, and...
And you can still go get quotes and stuff, too, and whatever, if you think you can find somebody, and, yeah, we'll level this out, and if our chair wants to have a meeting, that's fine, uh, it's okay by me, I guess.
So the building is coming down next?
Yes, the building's gone, it's just a matter of, I thought we could get the slab down, if we can agree on the size and everything, and we, we need a little more homework on that, because we, we argued about, at our own meeting, MK meeting, about the size of the building, and Jerry wanted the overhangs, which I, we've, we all supported, that sort of thing, and we have to have, like I said, I'm repeating myself.
Each of our parks is special in its own little way, but when you go and watch the University of Virginia girls play soccer at Miles Kimberley, you know it's damn special park, so I'm glad that's coming down, and we will move on with the other stuff, because it needs to be done, absolutely.
That is gone, it's just the idea that if we, I agree with John, we only, we wanna spend the money they're giving us this year, because they're not gonna give us much more next year, so we might as well do it, we can do this year, and whatever we have to do to do that, we should try to do, and if that means, sorry, if we have to have another meeting, special meeting before the Commissioners meet next month, we should...
This isn't our first rodeo with money in October and December.
You need your stuff, like, you get quotes, we have to schedule our meeting and make sure to do it. You got some homework to meet with some contractors, engraving this or leveling it out, bringing in this dirt, and pouring this pad, and how much is it gonna cost?
Sure, now we can do, but Laurel said we have to have the whole plan, we should have the whole plan
Well, that's a cheese.
before we lay the slab.
It makes sense so that you know what obstacles that are unforeseen are there, because it is, you know, an instruction project, and it's not like it's on flat land. Another thing that I was gonna mention later in the meeting, but it's just to consider, you're coming under some time crunches, almost every time, so you may want to, next year, consider strongly doing your parks meeting on a different day of the month. Right now, it's the third Wednesday of the month, but that seems to be really hard to try and work with a board meeting, you're always playing catch-up, so think about that for next year, maybe doing the first or the second Wednesday of the month, if that's possible. Look at your schedules, if you can do that.
I never thought about that before, but that's a...
First Wednesday sounds good, yeah.
You know, that way, you're, you're ready to go before they're even meeting.
That's a good idea.
Or even push it out to the end of the month.
That's true.
So that you're, you're giving yourself even an extra week in between.
And just be ahead of the game.
Yeah. You're losing January a little bit, but...
That's why you're getting a stipend.
Well, that's a very good point.
It is. John, you're gonna help me on this, and we'll, we'll, we'll get all our ducks in order, and then we'll call for a special meeting of our, of our Park and Rec Commission, and go from there, and it'll be before the next board meeting. But you're saying, well, maybe we don't even have to go to the board?
If it's under, if it's under 5 grand.
Yeah, hopefully.
It's under 5 grand.
We can do this.
Excavated alone, completed, uh, drill pass, or 5 grand alone, you get equipment in there, move that dirt, plus you get the well board up.
Pretty much, you figure a thousand bucks an hour.
There's some serious, serious issues there, the water pavement, Steve was all about that issue with that well.
You don't need any self-pants, it's fine.
So, Laurel, if, if I and one other MK member, like, say Steve or Mike, meets with John, that is not a conflict, because he's not part of our committee, true?
I can verify that, I'm pretty sure that's the case.
Okay, thank you.
As long as you're just discussing something, but not working towards a decision, that's the big thing.
Oh, we have to work towards a decision, yeah.
You're not working towards a recommendation.
You're coming up with some ideas on what, what to recommend.
Yeah, okay, I understand.
Three people still is in a quorum on this.
That's, that's true.
Three people can still pick together.
Oh, big point, yeah, okay, thank you.
You guys do your homework, and we'll be ready when you are. Is there anything else under my eyes?
Um, can I have a, um, review of what their recommendation was?
Well, it's on hold till next month.
Okay, same topic.
Right.
Okay.
That's right, right? You all agree on it?
For what?
You're not really moving forward on this as a whole, you're gonna keep working on it to bring it back to the board.
Yeah, John, John and I and one other person are gonna work on it, and we're gonna bring it back to the board.
Yes.
To this board, this commission, have a special meeting not in a month from now, no.
Well, to the full board, you're working on something to bring to the full board.
Well, apparently, no, but John says I don't have to bring it to the full board, maybe, if it's under 5,000.
No.
John, help me here.
You're referring to two different boards?
There's two different boards.
In the discussion, that's where the confusion is.
And you have to understand that if there's a contract or an agreement, it has to go to the full board of Commissioners.
Regardless of the value.
Yes.
Okay. So we do have to go, so we have, I have to, we have to get, I have to get it all planned out, and then I have to have a special meeting with this Park and Rec Commission, and then it has to go forwarded to the board.
If it's, if it's over 5 grand?
If it's over 5, yeah.
If it's under 5?
We don't, we can do it.
I suspect you're gonna be going to the board.
Yeah, you'll get a contract and stuff.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else under Miles?
No, thank you.
Old settlers? Has not met, and if there's any updates?
I think Laurel had a great idea, if it looks like we're gonna have some money left at the end of this year, maybe we can hold a, a committee meeting and look at some playground equipment, and maybe get a playground equipment purchased this year, that would save us money next year.
Yeah, absolutely.
I can put a note to contact Scott, I think he's got catalogs and equipment.
Yep, we'll just get to Scott and look at some.
And I gave you information from what Northport did.
Yes.
You have that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, moving on to Veronica Valley.
We did, uh, vote to recommend, we passed a resolution to recommend to this body that we, the Parks and Rec Commission, agree this year to work...
we, the Parks and Rec Commission, agree this year to work with, as we have in the past, the St. Mary's cross-country team for the holding of their regional meet or whatever it is, the multi-school meet. So Veronica Valley Committee has voted to recommend that this body approve that.
So...
Do you have the exact language?
So they voted to recommend to this body to approve the St. Mary's School Cross-Country event to be held on October sixteenth at Veronica Valley Park. And this doesn't have to go to the county board.
This is...
This can just, yeah, this Chet will sign off on that.
So moved from this commission.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Steve, supported by Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Do you want to express, explain, describe to the whole commission here that ARPA monies, I mean, the October deadline that would...
Yeah, there, I think if they haven't already done it, they're really close to finalizing the categories of what would be eligible funding for ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. And if there's any chance that something parks-related could get covered, that would probably help you with the board when it comes to getting some projects financed that you're very, that are important to this group. And if we can get the funding, it never hurts to put your hat in the ring. So we had a little discussion about the parks kind of earmarking some of their projects and coming up with something that we could submit to the board in the event that it does fall under some of the categories they approved. Because Chet just announced that there's a very good chance that the state will be matching the dollars, dollars for dollars, on whatever we, because we're eligible for getting four-point-two million, we've already received half of that and it's just sitting there waiting for us to assign to something once the board goes through its process of a public hearing and determining what they want to award. Because the board will be making that determination on who gets what. And if the state is willing to give us that same amount, you're looking at over eight million dollars. Now, I know that's a lot of money, we don't know if we'll qualify, but at least we tried.
Yeah, we talked about maybe our Miles Kimberly walking trail, it's a big ticket item.
What's the deadline to submit that?
Well, the deadline from the general public was August thirteenth, but if we work with Chet, we can probably get something because the board got a binder with requests and some pouring documentation, but because this is a county board, technically, I don't know why you wouldn't be able to put that in there. We could just say, well, we weren't sure if you would look at our request or we weren't sure if we were eligible, but if we are, we would like to be considered for an award.
I know I mentioned it to the board at one point.
Yeah.
Is there, so is there an application or do we just come up with?
It was just, the request to the public was a three-page document outlining what you're requesting and the potential funding that you need.
So it's a wish list?
Yeah, kind of.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Don, would you like to put something together for the walking trail in Miles?
Yeah, I know that, yes.
Okay. That'd be great, and it's October first.
Well, we don't know when they're going to hold the public hearing, that's to be determined, but it will be sometime, probably after the budget's approved and the board's had its annual meeting the second Tuesday of October.
Okay. You're on a time crunch, Don.
When you put in, when you ask for a walking trail, make sure you put cross-country trails at the same time, because there's a whole lot more cross-country skiing time during the year than walking.
Well, my thought was more to make it a universal access and make it flat and no hills, so you use the universal access and there's people to get out there and fresh air and seniors that don't get out, that was my, because we have plenty of walking trails and that at Miles Kimberly. So actually, I wanted to avoid any elevation and to make it wheelchair accessible and toddler accessible.
There's a lot of elevation changes at Miles.
Yeah, but we're designing it so it's not...
Part of it can be flat. Doesn't, you know, the accessible part doesn't have to do the loop.
There's a lot more skiing time during the year than there is walking time during the year, so I would...
No, I hear you.
So just have the wording have both of them on it.
Well...
Keep going with this.
Yeah.
Since you're mentioning cross-country skiing, I should mention that the Hickory Hills disc golf course, which is also part of the Hickory Hills ski trail system, once disc golf course is done, they're skiing down those, so there could be some sort of, I don't know, do you know his pattern for grooming for anything out there?
Or Scott and Laurel?
Yeah, no, Miles.
No, I don't know that one.
Okay. Because they could be...
This past year, we had, no, we had none.
Because now that everything's cleaned up, I would think you'd be able to use that course as a cross-country ski trail.
Well, I think that was part of Scott's idea was, because it was tough to get the groomer through all of that, and so opening it up should now open up some possibilities. Go ahead.
We're coming at our list. I mentioned, you know, that paved loop trail is anywhere from two-hundred to four-hundred-thousand bucks. We had pickleball courts prior to that, and that was fifty thousand. And if you're going to sit on a board of commissioners, it's easier to say yes to something a little smaller than something that's two to four-hundred-thousand dollars. I'd like to see playground equipment going in and pickleball courts go in.
You just volunteered yourself to write up a write-off?
No, they happened to be under, Old Settlers Park is for playground equipment and Miles Kimberly is for pickleball court, so those people can do it.
Hey, John, I'd speak to your pickleball, I liked the way you spoke about the uniqueness of all the parks and that the parks, Miles Kimberly has group activities and that's why I pushed for the drinking fountains that serviced the group activity. And pickleball, pickleball's the fastest-growing sport in the United States.
Unbelievable how many people play.
The average age is fifty, fifty-five years old, the average age in Willa County is fifty-six. So when Scott brought that up last, last time, that seems like it's something that we should seriously look at.
Yeah, I noticed that the Herman Park this past weekend, it was loaded with people, just people waiting to play.
Yeah.
It was incredible, I had no idea that it was such a draw. I mean, I play myself, but I've never played outside, just inside, and it was, all courts were full.
But your administrative assistant can type up those three things and put it right in front of the board. We don't have to roll on it or whatever.
The administrative assistant needs something to type up.
There you go. Touche.
I'll leave the trail, Michael, you do it. I just want to interject one thing, the reason when we rank ordered these and the loop trail got weighed on at the end, I spoke out and I said, you know, we can't fund that until 2023 because I was going to apply for a state grant from the DNR. And that's why I said, don't vote on that for the 2022 budget, and that's what that list is for. So the loop trail is a very popular wanted thing too. I'm not taking away from pickleball, pickleball might be more important, I don't know, but the loop trail definitely is. It was on our five-year plan, pickleball wasn't on our five-year plan. People spoke and of course, maybe pickleball wasn't that popular back then, I don't know.
Put them both in.
Yeah, you put this, that, that, and that, and then the pickleball court and stuff, you said, wow, this is big, let's approve those top three, you know? I'd like to see that playground equipment go in instead of just... And Veronica Valley has it on their list to put playground equipment too. I was just looking at our grant. Pavilion was in there, something for dumpster.
So Laurel will...
And playground.
Well, one letter saying all these things, that's not going to work, we have to have a separate letter for each of these.
This is kind of a conceptual thing.
Yeah.
If someone wanted to go into my office later, I can show you the binder with all the current requests in it so you can get an idea of what people are doing for the requests. But we simply asked for a three-page document that listed an outline of what you're thinking and a potential cost. Pretty easy.
So you could add a couple things in a three-page?
Yeah, you can have a lot.
Yeah, whole list.
Sure. So you're the chair, you can direct someone from each one of them.
Well, he's got...
I'll do the...
You'll do the whole thing?
Not the whole thing, oh, do you want me to do the loop and the pickleball?
No. Yeah, the loop is yours, pickleball court you just said yes to, and the playground equipment, you got the numbers, I think you're great at that.
So I can do it all in one, I can do it all in one, you want three separate ones?
No, I think you can just, from Willa County Parks and Recreation Commission, we respectfully request we consider this.
John, you got two of them from the hospital.
Is there anything else for Veronica?
Let me talk with planning department about their camera purchase at recycling locations and see if the parks might get in cameras, possibly. One location with dumpsters at Miles or two at Veronica, so it'd be three, but we don't know any numbers and some other issues in terms of where does the video go, it goes up to the cloud apparently automatically.
I think so, yeah.
But what kind of maintenance is involved? Not maintenance of the camera so much, but watching it, looking at it now. That may mostly happen when there's an incident after the fact, we go back and find out.
Make sure you're talking into your...
Excuse me. And in light of that, Laurel suggested, and we may do this at Veronica, but a Survey Monkey, creating a Survey Monkey survey to get possibly some public input heading towards this October input of, it's going to be a public hearing for the ARPA funds, there may be some way of augmenting that with Survey Monkey results, I don't know.
Well, even just overall, if you're being a little more interactive with getting public input from the people who are visiting those parks and tailor a survey just for each park that could be posted at the parks pavilion or lockbox, so people could just scan in a QR code with their smartphone and they'd be able to participate in a really short survey and get their input on what they'd like to see with the park or what they like or even maybe voice of concern.
So I will, I will work with Laurel at moving ahead on that and, and, yeah, having one from each park, you know, frankly, my experience, our experience with the state grant, having that in place and ongoing through each of our seasons at the park would be a positive point in a grant application that we've been gathering public input in this fashion over a period of time. So I'll speak with Laurel about that in terms of having it developed for all three parks.
All coming in.
And I'll be checking on, because Don and John and myself, we've talked about wayfaring signage at the park, that's been held up waiting for the arrival, I guess, to Rob Herman's office of the processed latest ortho photos. The last I remember hearing was it was going to be here in September before it was done, but I'll check on that so that Don, I'll find out about the status of those photos and we may then move ahead with wayfaring signage, further plans if that photo's in. We really kind of have that, a lot of that decided. The wayfaring signs will be, the design idea is to make each sign the same so that we don't, if we have them located, say, at Veronica at five locations, we don't have to have five different signs printed up saying, you are here. It's going to be signage that has each of the locations numbered and then the post on which the sign is placed will have that number. So that we can have one sign printed up for the whole, each of the whole parks and yet each one will refer to a different spot on the trail where they're looked at, so. But that's dependent on that photo and I'll check on those things as well.
Anything else?
No.
Anything else, anybody else? Moving on to public comment.
I'll make one last comment. We already talked about the Survey Monkey, we talked about maybe adjusting the meeting date, yearly parks onsite meeting, I wasn't really too thrilled about going to Miles, I'll admit it, but these guys just lit up and the ideas were bouncing off right and left with what they could do when they were onsite and they could see the lay of the land. So maybe each committee could meet just yearly, maybe biyearly, with onsite and just looking at the park and what they see as a concern or what might work for that park.
I like that.
Do we need a motion for that?
No, it's just a thought.
The format was that we started at Miles and then finished the meeting here.
Right.
Matt blocks in Laurie and the ability to wrap up the technical end on their end.
Yep.
It didn't quite work out, we lost quorum, but we did start and the idea was to finish here. I liked, I liked it, we used to meet at the parks, I think it's good.
Yeah, I like that.
Now, did Laurie have to be there then at the park, at the park site? I mean, the minutes were taken there as well.
She took notes and the thought was we would finish up here, but it just didn't finish up there, so that's why we finished today. We recessed the meeting and then we reconvened today to finish it.
How long would that, if we met at the park?
It was ten o'clock and then reconvene at one was the idea.
I think it was nine-thirty, nine, nine-thirty when we started and then we, we're going to recess at ten-thirty and then reconvene here at eleven.
Try to wrap in a half day.
Yeah. Those are some good ideas.
That was good.
Yeah, Dave, you know, you know, once we started meeting here, we're keeping an agenda and keeping minutes like for Veronica. Laurel, right, you can go out there and do some stuff as long as these minutes are kept and recorded of what you said and all that. You don't need three separate minutes and postings and all that other stuff, correct me, right?
I guess I'm a little lost.
We didn't have minutes before, we only started at once we started meeting here for Veronica and stuff.
Well, we posted at both locations because legally with the Open Meetings Act, you have to post it where you're going to be at. So if you're starting at the park, we have a posting there.
Right.
And then we have a posting here and anyone can attend and offer input.
And then just state during this commission meeting what we did and stuff so it gets recorded.
Right.
Well, it was recorded onsite and then back here it was recorded what we talked about with that meeting, so the whole thing was recorded, recording documents were made, minutes were made.
I had a video going on my phone, the sound wasn't super good.
It works.
Jerry?
Well. Just that I'm enthused about that idea because I don't know if you recall, but when we split up into the three separate committees, each park had a committee, my intent was to have our meeting at Veronica and for the committee, that very first one, and it became clear that was real difficult.
Well, not many staff will, I'll tell you, the clerk thinks it's not really that great of an idea and you're coming from the standpoint of it's very difficult for staff to accommodate and still maintain the OMA aspect of that. But if we're doing this just now and then, it's okay to do that.
Okay, that's okay.
Just not, we're not going to do this every meeting.
Each committee gets once a year. Each committee gets once a year, it's kind of...
That's fine.
Go ahead, Jerry.
This is public comment.
Yep.
My name's Jerry Common, the McConaughey Silk Road.
My name's Jerry Common, the Lake Glenagh Silk Road, mile away, also maintenance director. For years, it's been, one of the pet pieces that are appalling to me is the pit toilets at Miles Kimberly Park. Those especially, and of course, one of Old Settlers, which was nice at the beginning, but the location of one of Old Settlers sits next to, you know, residential and whatnot and there's a lot of dead air in there sometimes. But I have a problem with one at Miles Kimberly. It's, thank God, it's an accident waiting to happen. You know, I mean, it's an open hole, those bathrooms. They, they're used by people on that side sometimes, but we have the portage jobs on the other side that the soccer field is. It's costly, but they're taken care of. I'm not worried about the cleaning. We go in with a hose, spray things down, wipe it off, you got cement walls, you have an open hole. And to me, it's, you know, I have to worry about my sewer plant out here with open lids and whatnot because of public. And public is around the parks at Miles Kimberly a whole lot more than they are over at my sewer plant over here. You know, but I have, you know, they're eight foot deep. Well, the pit toilets I find to be appalling and unsanitary and they're dangerous, the little ones. Whoever they may be, fall in those holes because there's nothing to stop them. Sure, it's convenient, that's wonderful, but I'm surprised that they're even allowed anymore just because of the liability alone. But they're, they're unhealthy and they're a safety hazard. And that one time, that's all it takes is once. But I mean, you can fit a whole person down the damn hole. So figure a little child happens to get away from neglect parent, you know? So I'm just saying, that's my comment on, I'd like to see them gone, bulldozed. And cost the county money, I understand, for the pit toilets. They do clean them, but they're more sanitary and they're a lot safer. I don't have to worry about someone drowning them, going in headfirst or a child. Okay, but that's, 40 years has been one of my deals, but I've never said anything publicly. But I just think it should be addressed someday by someone or someone with authority to get rid of them. Thank you.
You're saying take them out and replace them?
Get rid of them.
Portables?
A couple portables there for the playground side and that's just a safety hazard. Little ones, that's all it takes. Hell, I can step inside them right now.
Yeah.
If I wanna go down, I mean, sure, it's great. We've been pumped once or twice a year. But how much rain gets in there, I don't know, but anyway, I think it's antiquated and it's dangerous. And so I'm saying, both of them are. The ones at Miles Old Settlers, we bought that and all. It was, it works, but it doesn't. So that's just my view. Thank you.
Should we put that on the agenda or not? You can. Discussion? The mobile pit toilets.
We don't have any outside flush toilets with sinks open to the public, right? That's, the townships all have that, right?
In village.
Villages have it, yeah.
Steve, what do they do in the winter time?
That's a good question. I assume they shut them down, lock the door, you know, pick them and make sure it doesn't freeze.
Yeah, like get the cold rain and stuff.
Yeah.
Won't you discuss that?
I know we talked kind of at length about what it would look like at Veronica Valley with the pavilion that we were going for. And I know Jerry came up with some ideas and whatnot with regard to the units themselves and how they would look and the different ones that are available and whatnot. You know, and I don't know what we would do if we got rid of what we have. But, you know, the Miles Kimberly plan has a central area with flush toilets.
No, don't.
Veronica Valley has the pavilion that, you know, the plan that we just had done has a similar arrangement, a utility area and flush toilets.
Don't full flush toilet restrooms require a lot of maintenance, cleaning? My experience comes from eight summers working as a ranger at a state park. And those bathrooms were cleaned twice a day. And one of those shifts, four or five days a week, I was on. It was a lot of work maintaining, keeping a public bathroom clean. It was, it was a huge maintenance issue. So I've just kind of shied away from even thinking about it for our parks because of the.
Especially as much use as they would get. I mean, they'll get some use, obviously, but is the investment really worth the?
Our cleaning company here handles the public restrooms down in Little. And the stories are, as you can imagine, just, you know, because of the flushing and whatnot, try to keep clean. They do it twice a day down there during summer, which, you know, sucks, but it's the same thing. And it's, it's a real hassle when you have running, you know, toilets like that. Because you always have those people. If you have your first portage job, it's pretty basic. First they can do is, you know, rock and roll it and tip it over, you know, and then they get blue. So, or red, whatever the chemical they use in there. But hey, you're right. And so that's something to be considered if we go to, I would like, you know, you have a lot of info there, sure. Maybe there's something out there that's.
We like having people throw trash in our dumpsters and shelves so that your annual order to do a bathroom.
Oh, yeah. Well, you look at the pit toilets at, I just did one the other day at the Glen Lake Boat Launch and it says, there's two signs, one when you're going in the door and there's one right there when you're standing there taking a leak. Do not throw cans or trash in the pit. And the whole thing's full of trash. So there, yeah.
That's what a pit was too. We used to have pumped, well, portage did, and you'd say, well, I found two basketballs and football. You know, and God knows what else. That's the sad thing about.
Jerry, if somebody dumps, say, a mattress and springs at a park, what do you do related to that?
We pick it up, throw it in the back bucket and we put it in our dumpster.
And, okay, there is one at Veronica Valley.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Somebody's house.
I saw that last time.
Yeah.
People are bold.
All right, any other public comment? Any commissioner comments?
I'm okay.
Nothing from me, so move to adjourn.
So move.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I am not here in October. My youngest son is getting married. I'm gone for two weeks.
I plan to be here, but we're having a baby sometime.
Then I won't be here for two weeks either. I've got a marriage in Texas.
So that's true. We'll get it figured out.